I'm giving the order of the judicial litigants. The judicial litigants to defy of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Report any executive sessions?
They're running out.
Public comment? Morning Laura.
Good morning.
Morning. Yes, that wasn't the meeting they locked into this morning.
That was terrifying. I thought, oh my goodness, I'm an hour late.
No, you aren't.
Thank you. My name is Laura Krzyzniewski. I live in the city of Pottsville. On November 6th of 1924, I mean from 2024, I attended the Bobby Weaver versus the city of Pottsville hearing. Pennsylvania Constitution, Article One, Section 11 reads that all courts shall be open and that every man, for an injury done him in his lands, goods, person, and reputation, shall have remedy by due course of law and right and justice administered without sale, denial, or delay. On 22 July 2013, when Pennsylvania Supreme Court first published a guide to filing pro se filings, the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania stated, quote, "Pro se litigants are held to the same standard of professional standards as attorneys admitted to the bar of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Pro se does not exempt anyone from understanding and following the Pennsylvania rules of appellate court." If, anyway, what, the term pro se came into existence in 1993 when the Supreme Court made certain decisions. Okay, so to enter the Pennsylvania Bar Association, a person must take an oath of office to support and defend the United States Constitution, the Pennsylvania Constitution, to fulfill the duties of office with fidelity to the client and to the court and to not use falsehoods or delay a person's cause for malice or greed. Renaming every man, every non-lawyer citizen exercising a constitutional right into a pro se litigant, that is, one carrying on professional lawsuit, was the first step in altering Pennsylvania's Article One, Section 11 for ordinary persons seeking right and justice. The Supreme Court and every lawyer know that every person does not take an oath of office to fill duties to the fidelity of the court, that the Constitution does not require citizens to pre-qualify or to enter open court, to know and expertly apply 4,000 procedural rules of court, that every man does not have a client to require a need to regulate unethical conduct by officers of the court so as to be held to the same professional standard as a lawyer. The Pennsylvania rules of court now trump the Pennsylvania citizens constitutional right contained in Article One, Section 11. At all times, the court knows they are creating impossible ends in justice and causing the open courts through, and closing the open courts through draconian application of professional standards on the unlearned and promoting civil unrest and gross injustice. Pennsylvania Rule of Court Number 127 says that the court does not intend an absurd end. It is an absurd end to require 4,000 rules to be followed. I witnessed on November 6th an estimated 13,000 people of Pottsville to be injured by the Pennsylvania court system and the city of Pottsville through creating a monopoly of the court system for lawyers and closing the courts to the people. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Morning Maria.
Good morning. Ready? The buck stops here. Who said that Boots? The buck stops here. You don't know? Okay.
Yes, I said it.
Oh, you did. Harry Truman. Okay, so the buck stops with you. There is what Larry? 16.3 million dollar deficit announced a couple of weeks ago? That's close enough, right? That coupled with the reassessment and the school districts raising taxes will be insurmountable to the working class in the county. Have you forgotten the working class?
No.
We'll show them that. So we have a couple of choices here. I think one of our veteran row officers who's pretty savvy raised with you at the meeting a couple of weeks ago. What about all these outside consultants? Get rid of them. The majority of them. Are you working on that?
Yes.
Because you've been here a year now.
Almost a year Maria.
Oh, yeah, almost. I could probably get it.
And one of the things we would consider too is row off, I'll take it off your time.
Thank you.
I asked the row officer to consider combining legal attorneys
Yeah.
and sharing attorneys because we have attorney for row officers.
Yeah.
That's one of the things too, that everything's on the table.
Everything's on the table. You also have three solicitors, one of whom, only one of whom is here full-time. And so you parcel out a ton of legal work. Wouldn't it should be done in-house? Are you considering that? Making your solicitors work full-time and getting rid of these outside law firms. Is that on the table?
And what, getting rid of all the row officers like Lehigh County?
No, 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 I'm talking about.
Okay, because like Lehigh County and they think it's reserve, and this is not.
Oh, good, good. Yeah, gosh, I have all data.
They have a in-house counsel and no row officer has an attorney. And then you have three full-time county attorneys that handle everything.
And, and that might be something you might want to discuss with your solicitors who are not full-time except for Mr. Rice.
Yep.
You know, again, another, another matter to be looked at, but a drop in the bucket compared to the outside consultants, as was pointed out to you. So you must start looking at them. You must, because, I'll ask you Gary.
In which out types of consultants are you referring to?
Oh gee, where do I start? I have them here. Eckerd Siemens is one of them. How much do you pay Eckerd Siemens a year? Do you know?
I don't think they're paid anything right now, are they? Because they're not doing any reports or any investigations. Eckerd Siemens is only paid on an as needed basis, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so since their last, whatever their last investigation was, their last report, they're not being paid.
And you have Susquehanna Consulting.
For?
Well, I'm not sure what they were here for. Probably to tell you how to spend the ARPA funds.
Susquehanna Consulting provides a very valuable service to help both on the CARES Act and on the.
And their contract is wound down now too?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, it's down now, but you've paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to your outside consultant. Anyone can get on smart term. Who has access and see that? So you've got to look at that. I still asked years ago, and I will ask again, why are you paying Susquehanna to interpret ARPA funds? If you can read, you know what you could have used those for. Again, all this parcelling out, Mr. Bender, last time I checked, is this pretty smart guy. That could have been done in-house. So start changing your focus. People here are smart. We don't have to go outside. I think we can handle it. So let's do it. How you overcome 16.3 million?
Well, I think it's 16.3.
Well, you said that a couple of weeks ago.
I thought it was 16 last week.
Well, what is it? What is it?
Um, what's our roughly, Paul?
I'll defer to Gary.
What's our roughly, what we're looking at for our deficit?
For our deficit.
For our budget. Where are we at? Protect the shortfall.
Oh my lord.
Right now, we're projecting about 13.3, 13.5. However, those are very preliminary numbers yet.
Yeah, these aren't, we're adopting our preliminary budget next week.
Well, is the public given access to the process? Because we're at the end of the year. You have to adopt something.
It has to be open to the public.
That's what next week's for.
And the public will be part of this.
The preliminary budget will be really, it'll make it come along. It'll be public.
The preliminary budget will be presented next week. It will then be advertised for 30 days. It will be on display here at the commissioner's office.
So if, after it's done, the public will see it, but won't have any.
Because we don't vote on the budget until December 18.
Okay, so anyway, not only with these outside consultants, which I have here, and obviously, if you want me to go into detail, I can certainly do that. Now wouldn't be the time. But you have to look at that. You also have to look at divesting some real estate, which I think was also mentioned to you by another veteran row officer.
We're already looking into divesting over there.
Good, the STS building, right?
We're looking at.
That is.
And we sold the land in Pine Grove.
Right.
Uh, what Campbellwood development that was. There's land in Schoolville Township that we're in the process of.
Right.
And the S test building, STS building is, I think that's in or in the process. But Commissioner Hess has also brought up the, with private lease center, that was one of the options for private lease center. So we're still seeing how that project is, but yes, STS is on, STS is on the, it's on the horizon.
With a 13.3 million dollar deficit, you're not going to be able to float bonds for a private lease center. Those days are over. This is in crisis mode now. You maybe have to, you may have to look at a bankruptcy.
No, this county does not have to look at a bankruptcy.
Well.
And, you know, Maria, so only, you know, we're looking possibly layoffs. So I was going to talk about the budget a little bit today, preliminary things. So I might as well just do it now.
Sure.
So we, what, 67, 37 positions were, were removed so far. We're making changes to the county's healthcare policies. Some of the stuff that's provided in the healthcare policies, just like every other place. But it's not only the county. School districts are offering people bonuses to leave their healthcare to go on their, you know, part of their healthcare and everything. The county's looking at everything. We've had negotiations with Benicon, you know, but the driving force of our, of anything that we're doing is our 911 and our healthcare issues. Healthcare is 14% increase roughly over last year.
$3 million.
$3 million right there, 14% increase on healthcare. Not willing to cut, you know, the county employees that they don't have healthcare. We don't want to hurt them there. And 911, when they changed the funding formula, when that new tax went through for the cell phones, everybody thought the funding formula would be, we would get like $2 million. And they, the county, Schoolville County got $186,000. So our 911 is paramount to public safety. Plus, we're one of the few counties that municipalities and school districts do not pay towards the 911. The county shoulders the entire burden of that. Most municipalities, the fees distributed out amongst the municipalities. And, you know, because I don't know why it was created that way and Schoolville County did it whenever we created our 911, but Schoolville County shoulders the entire burden of that. And there are two biggest drivers are the healthcare and our 911, which is for public safety. Because if we would have got our allocation that we normally should have got, there's one mill. Right there is a mill. But we only got $186,000 in this last application because they changed the formula. And that formula is changing again, I think.
Sun sets next year.
Sun sets next year, so nobody knows what everybody's getting next year.
The formula was changed from population, population density. So that could have been a new, which paid for the Bucks County.
A lot of our stuff that comes into counties because the state says, here you go, you have to do this. And we change the formulas, we do this, we do that. And sometimes your hands are tied. You know that Maria, from being a row officer, when they, the state says something, sometimes we have to take the burden of it.
Well, I was always under budget every year, all eight years, and also the two I was in the DA's office. I prepared those budgets as well, always under budget. So, that being said.
We're looking at everything.
You must, and you have to, this absolutely outrageous spending on outside consultants when we have a good working force here.
Well, I think our outside hubrick's done.
That's.
Yeah.
It's basically closing like an extra 300.
Hubrick's done.
We're not done.
I don't know what other, you know, we can have a look at what all else is, Susquehanna's done, hubrick's done. Susquehanna's contract was entered into before I was here. Hubrick was for.
HR consulting.
HR consulting, but that's finished now.
And they're, they're still funded for help in recruitment.
Yeah, but that's only on an as needed basis.
That is correct.
They don't get paid on a lot. They only go around as needed basis. Okay, so we are reading the man slot.
Yeah, and again, you have an HR department here.
I agree.
Or sort of. So what are you, what are you paying hubrick for? Why?
Well, we're as right now, but I'm a consultant.
Well, on an as needed basis, you don't, if you have an HR department, again, just another outsourcing that is totally uncalled for. We're in a crisis mode. We need to cut these outside consultants.
Into services that help us immensely in recruiting.
Oh my god.
It did get us, it did get us some really good candidates for the open positions. It helped with MIS, it helped with.
MIS was done internally.
Well, that, but it also found two programmers that we're interviewing. So it did help, but I agree, but we're looking at, trust me, in 2025, the first budget that I'm responsible for, we are cutting everything we possibly get.
We, you must. There's no trick.
I agree completely.
So let me ask one last question here. I'll ask Gary, be honest. Will a working class family be able to sustain a reassessment in addition to a county tax increase, which is coming, you know that Larry? And the school tax increases? Will an average working class family be able to survive that? What do you think?
Well, it just depends on what people do after the reassessment.
Right.
Because the reassessments are supposedly.
They're, they're putting, the school districts and municipalities are putting the increases in place now.
Beforehand, yes.
Yes, they're preempting, they're preempting.
They are.
So you have.
But we can't control what they do.
I know that, but you have to anticipate that mine's already did it. You have to anticipate that.
Who matters if the taxes are here?
Correct. So you have a triple, triple threat that will cripple the working class, cripple it. Gary agrees, anybody agrees.
But if you don't do a responsible budget in 2025, then you're guaranteeing a tax increase in 2026 and 2027. And in 2026, there's no way I'm putting a tax increase on anybody in this county because of the reassessment. I would never vote for a tax increase ever in 26 because of the reassessment. Plus, we're limited to 10%.
Right.
You're limited on what you can do in 2026 under the reassessment. So our school, my correct call, school districts and municipalities are.
Correct.
So there's a limit. Now, school districts and municipalities have a different set of rules, I think afterwards, how they can take a vote or something a little differently than the county does.
So it, so you agree. It's one or the other. If you have a reassessment in place, there cannot be a county tax increase.
In 2026, yes.
Or, or going, or after. I mean, because your reassessment still is carrying over. So you cannot have that because an average working class family in this county will not be able to survive.
Well, what we're doing with 2025's budget is budgeting for two years.
Right.
We're trying to anticipate what the costs will be. And these costs, like I said, the healthcare is out of our control. Every year, there's a 3% raise for county employees. I'm not counting, I'm not cutting the county employees 3% when inflation's at 20%.
Well, I totally agree with that.
Okay, so what I'm saying to you is, it's not like these are just frivolous things that are out there. The biggest drivers for healthcare, the 3% raises for all county employees that happened in January and our 911. They are the three biggest drivers of our budgetary issues.
And, and outside consultants, which all, which all detail.
How much is outside consultants? $300,000, one mill generates 2.5 mill. So you're talking 0.3 of a percent?
300,000 is a lot.
But that's 0.3 of a percent of a mill.
I, I get it, but it counts.
And we're picking, we're trying to pick at everything.
Well, you have to pick at everything. Sell the real estate, fire sale, you have to.
We're already, we already agreed to.
And get this budget down.
That's what we're doing.
Because otherwise, you will see working class families having to choose between paying these taxes or putting food on the table.
I agree.
Totally unacceptable.
And hopefully, there is a change now in the next three years.
From where?
On a federal level.
Okay.
Thank you Maria.
Thank you Larry for giving me over the three minutes.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Any other public comment? Because I'm going to talk about the budget anyways, but since you brought it up, I figured I'd as well do it then.
All right.
Just Uncle Palo Alto. On the deficit, Mr. Bender says it's a valuable service for Susquehanna. The only valuable service they provided was how to plug the shortfalls with the money, which was a waste. I've said it for years. You're going to keep plugging those shortfalls and eventually you're going to have to bite the bullet and pay it. Larry, you campaigned on it too, you know what I mean?
No, I agree.
It was the whole thing of plugging those shortfalls and keep using that money. A lot of nonprofits, a lot of urgency services, everybody that could have used that money. Instead, we ignore the shortfalls and we just plug it with that. And now look at what we're in, a disaster. You spoke about the 37 positions. They're pretty much slush jobs. They've been hanging out there, many of them for six months just to put the budget up for those row offices. Never really utilized, most of them are needed.
We're never removed before.
Right. Some are still up there saying they closed three months ago, four months ago. Some, some that you said were posted were never posted, so the HR doesn't do very good with that either, just like the last meeting didn't do very well. You stated the three drivers were the 3% raise, the healthcare, and the 911 center. My calculations are correct. That's about $6 million. There's still $10 million unaccounted for. So even if you do solve them, you're still, that's a four mill increase if my calculations are correct. Moving back to the normal stuff, I see Ms. Gaffney's not here to explain her FMLA claim. She lied to the taxpayers. I would still like her to come to a meeting and explain that. She is not allowed by state law to collect FMLA, so I would like her to explain to the taxpayers why she's not here, 60 hours and seven months, and then claim she was on FMLA. We deserve an answer. Lisa Stevens, a no show again. Creates a time card theft scheme, gets a pay raise, promotion, hasn't been at a meeting in years. Move on to Mr. Whittick being appointed, I brought this up last week. Who vets the people in the courthouse here? Is it the HR, like when you get hired? Is it mainly HR that vets the people and checks on them?
They're hiring, yes.
Okay. So I know he's appointed, but hiring. We've had people with thefts from Walmart in the last year, which is a felony. Printing fake money, which is a felony. Aggravated assaults, a felony. You allow George in here with the damning allegations and proof. Uh, Mr. Girkowski, with his accusations, you had reward him and move him to another position. You had a controller with accusations that you let resign prior to coming out. Mr. Hatter resigned after his came out. Now you're appointing Mr. Whittick to a board, who admitted, openly admitted that he had sexual relations with a sixteen year old as he was thirty years old because she acted more mature. All meanwhile, this is all going on in the county and permitted and approved by the commissioners. And then you hire an HR director who promotes deep throat challenge contests on his Facebook page. Absolutely mind blown. How can you be a woman and be comfortable coming into this courthouse with the way you guys hire and allow people to do that? And then that page put putting that on his Facebook page? Absolutely disgusting. Nobody will go to him with any issues. Speaking of that, I see there's a settlement here, another settlement lawsuit. Do we have details of that? Is the public gonna be made aware of what the settlement details are, or is that?
Yeah, okay, sure, that's the three months.
Okay, I just have one more task since Maria. Uh, speaking of the settlements, they say when one door closes, another door opens. Is anybody gonna make any statements today about the new lawsuit that was filed last week in the Pennsylvania Middle District Court against the county, Mr. Bender? And the oh so wonderful hubrick that you just announces on an as needed basis for retaliation on job discrimination? It was filed on November sixth, amended on November seventh, and the county was served. Is anybody gonna speak about that today?
Well, I know we got the lawsuit, yeah.
Okay. So I would like that addressed because, again, taxpayers are gonna foot the bill either directly or indirectly. And when the insurance comes through for all these lawsuits, we're gonna be the ones biting the bullet because you guys don't have proper HR. He is the biggest waste of money in this courthouse. Fire him, and there's a hundred thousand dollars solution right there. You're paying hubrick to do his his whole job.
Oh.
He's a waste. He didn't have anything in line for last week. You and Sharon had to tell him what was going on. Why are we paying him ninety thousand dollars? Absolutely, absolutely disgusting, so hopefully he goes down with the ship in this lawsuit.
Any other public comment?
Good morning, Larry, I.
Good morning.
I.
Morning, George.
Uh, good morning, Threes, uh, I wouldn't want your job, Larry, because you're stepping into a situation, I know you knew it was in bad shape, but you never thought it was in this bad shape. My name is George Stankovich from Palo Alto, and I just wanna say, uh, part of the problem with all, all government solutions and and everything like that, people that are supposed to be in the office have an assistant to an assistant to an assistant to an assistant. That's why some people don't know what's going on in their office. Because you're handing down information from from hand to hand and nothing gets straightened out. Nothing gets told the proper way. You're you're trying to fish, where are you getting this information from? Am I going there? And you have to go to a hundred places, just like in the courthouse. Now, did anybody get anything from their reassessment? I surely did yesterday. So, and they already, I think they're testing us. I think they're testing us. This bar provision, I'm telling you, it's nothing but gonna be a headache. And if my taxes go up, you you better believe I'm gonna be right at Argo's office. And I was talking to attorney, uh, I can't even think, think straight, I'm so upset about all this stuff. People are losing their homes right and left, right and left, and you turn your heads. This is a situation, this thirteen and a half million dollars. You know, it sounds like, huh, that's a drop in the bucket or something like that. Look at all Scranton and all these other counties that are, they just went into dumpsters for years. This is ridiculous. And that's where Schuylkill County is right now. The western part of this uh, county, they, hey, they know what a dump is. I'm sorry to say that. They have to live in that area. We gotta straighten all these problems out. Then they're looking for for these dumps to get more and more dumped in there. This is ridiculous. This is human lives. This is what we gotta look at. Not, oh, I did this and I did that and chill out for photo ops. I'm tired of this nonsense. It's the same thing over, over again. Let's wise up. Let's straighten everything out, know who to blame and who not to blame. And like I said, there's some jobs in in this courthouse that shouldn't even be there, shouldn't even be there. We're paying out right and left, and we're short money already. You already know we're gonna be short money. And this is ridiculous. And this guy over here, I'll tell you what, he's a big joke. He's a big joke, bar, I'm talking about bar. No, no, I'm saying tax.
Sorry, every call works.
Not yet. He does some good things in this county, but uh, bar, from that vision, he's not telling us all the truth. And I'm telling you, I'll be the first one at his door, I guarantee it. I'll be at his door, not over here at his house.
Okay, that's the three months.
Okay, this is ridiculous. I'm telling you, that's, get it straightened out.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I already got, that I have ten acres.
Good morning.
Public water. Okay, uh, Melinda Dibbert, North Mannheim Township. Okay, glad to hear, to quote Commissioner Padora, our chairman, everything is on the table. We are cutting everything we can.
Trying to, yes.
Okay, let's take a look at the agenda. Emergency Management Agency. Um, you know, maybe math is not my strong suit, but it's a five year uh, lease agreement for ten thousand eight oh six for EMA for a vehicle. That, in my estimation, comes out to more like fifty four thousand thirty one bucks, because it's a five year lease. But anyway, what what do I know? Another vehicle for EMA?
They're replacing.
I don't.
That's out of the service.
Larry.
Well, they need vehicles that are safe to drive. I'm sorry, but when a vehicle's not good.
Their own vehicles aren't safe to drive, their own vehicles.
I won't, I'll give you time.
We're cutting everything that we can, really.
I don't think your comments, the wording was removed from the vehicles, and it wasn't. And I also told them, if they're going to take vehicles home, it needs to be only when they're on call, and that's it.
So we've got five full time employees, and I'm assuming they're receiving health benefits as well, right?
For the EMA, I believe so.
Five full time positions. Before those three new positions were created in October of last year, did our human resources director or anyone conduct any sort of salary study to compare not only the number of positions for an EMA department, but also the salaries? Did they make phone calls to neighboring counties, counties that have a similar size to Schuylkill County to find out what their EMA director is making, what their assistant or deputy director is making? When John Matts retired as the director for EMA, he had almost twenty years of service in, and he was making sixty eight thousand dollars a year. John Blickley waltzed into that position, and his pay was immediately bumped up to eighty thousand dollars a year. A twelve thousand dollar increase in one fell swoop. Nick Rosalavage, as deputy director, was bumped up to seventy two thousand dollars a year. That's more than John Matts was making after almost twenty years of service as the director of EMA. We're cutting everything we can, we're gonna be tightening our belts. You know what? I'm not seeing it. An EMA answers to the Board of Commissioners. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves to be asking all of these row officers to cut two positions in their offices when they are independently elected officials. You're asking them to cut positions, but yet you're handing out money left and right to departments that fall under your purview.
Yeah. Better time, I'll let you go a little longer. We are looking at everything, but it's not.
Why do they need, oh, I don't get it. They have a command vehicle and three other.
Two other, two other vehicles.
Uh, John Blickley stood here last week and said three vehicles.
The command vehicles parked and only used when it's on.
And he said three vehicles along with the command. That makes four total vehicles.
The command vehicle's not used in everyday use.
Well, I would hope not.
Yeah, so it's only.
Yeah, they'd be embarrassed to be driving that around.
Did you see the command vehicle?
What difference does that make?
You're just saying it's like a big tank. So that's only sent out on emergency situations.
And I'd like to know how many of those employees are taking vehicles back and forth to their homes every day from, and I believe one of our employees lives where, Carbon County?
Last.
And he right now, just so y'all know, so for anybody else in the county that's not being afforded the opportunity and you're not getting your mileage reimbursed when you drive back and forth from your home to the county every day, we right now have someone who lives in Carbon County, and the taxpayers are picking up the tab for his gas, the maintenance, the insurance, et cetera, on that vehicle. This is at the expense of the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you, Mel.
Everything's on the table, we're cut, we're cutting everything we can.
And I know, well, you're the only one that's capable of doing it, and nobody else is. Thank you for your comments.
I never said that.
Can I, uh, any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Shirley, do you want to?
No.
Okay. No, why not Shirley? You like that one, say it, public comment. Second it for tomorrow night, that's right. And I want to mention that, because Shirley reminded me of it, uh, when I looked at her. At six PM tomorrow night at the Tremont Borough Hall, I don't know the exact address. Clay, Clay Street, Clay Street, there's a meeting with DEP that, you know, thankfully, we finally got them to agree to at six PM, and I encourage everybody to attend and ask questions.
Are any of you home?
Yes, I'm coming.
All three?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, Gary, who said yes?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I motion approve the minutes for the Commissioner meetings of October twenty third, twenty twenty four?
So moved.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion approve the minutes for the Commissioner's work session on November seventh?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Um, can I have a motion to approve what was presented the three items by Emergency Management?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Motion to approve what was presented by the prison, prison for our work session.
Motion for the prison request.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion approve what was presented by public works at the Commissioner's meeting?
Looking to public legal contract for public works.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion approve, uh, for the block grant, approve the agreement, parking authority?
Motion to approve the block grant, yeah.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
A motion to approve what was presented by the district attorney's outside work session.
So moved.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve the eight, uh, items for the grant writers that was presented at the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve for MIS, uh, the one thing they presented for work session?
So moved.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion approve the four items that were presented by children on you for work session?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion approve the five items that were presented at the work session of the, from the Office of Senior Services?
So moved.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
A motion to approve what was presented by engineering at our work session.
I'm motion to approve the engineering question.
Second.
Question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by the county administration? The six items that were presented for work session?
So moved.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Padora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Uh, Paul, new business?
Uh, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, there are two budget adjustments that are listed on the agenda today, and both budget adjustments have been posted outside the table.
Thank you. Uh, new business solicitor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, seeking approval of the global settlement for general release agreement substantially in the form presented to the Board of Commissioners among the county. Scott Clues, Joseph S. Pothering, and Deborah M. Detwiler relating relating to the lawsuit pending in the United States District Court for the Middle District of Pennsylvania, case number three seventeen dash CB dash zero, zero, two, two, three, three, including the payments to be made thereunder. Those payments, uh, the overall settlement is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, twenty five thousand dollars of which comes from the county, the balance of which comes from P Court, the county's insurance counter.
Motion to approve what was presented by Solicitor's Office?
I'm making motion for the global settlement.
Second. Second.
Other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Uh, new business, Gary Bender.
On behalf of the Tax Claim Bureau, approval of two private sales, posted in Shenandoah, to the Schuylkill County Rehabilitation Authority. Uh, on behalf of the Schuylkill Conservation District, approved to appoint Gary Bowman as a public director for a four-year term as a member of the Board of Directors of the Schuylkill Conservation District, effective January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2028. Approval to reappoint Scott Braver as a public director, and Russell Wagner as a farmer director for a four-year terms as members of the Board of Directors of the Schuylkill Conservation District, effective January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2028. Approval to reappoint Commissioner Gary Hess as the County Commissioner Director for a one-year term, January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2025. And on behalf of Engineering, is Lisa here?
I am.
Do you wanna read that, Lisa?
Sure. I'm requesting approval to advertise for bids for the replacement of County Bridge 24 East Line Street over Wood Spring Creek, Tremont Borough. Bids will be received online via the Penn bid program by the Schuylkill County Controller until 9:00 AM Monday, December 9th, and open and, and the Commissioner's Boardroom. The bid will be, will be reported at the Board of Commissioners' work session on December 11th, with a tentative bid award on Wednesday, December 18th. I, I would like to note that this is the second time that we bid. We bid at last year, and the bids were, we only received one bid, it was $2.4 million, which was below our budget, so we decided to reject the bid and readvertise. So, the construction won't be for next year.
Okay, can I motion to approve, um, everything that was presented on the new business for Gary Bender, except the, the approval to reappoint Commissioner Gary Hess, we'll review that separately.
Make that motion.
Second.
Other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Can I have a motion to approve the reappointment of Commissioner Gary Hess as the County Commissioner Director, Director for the one-year term of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Hess.
I'll second it. Other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
And I'll need to accuse myself because I sit on it. I'm accusing myself.
Wolf over. Uh, Human Resources.
Yes, good morning Commissioners. In tax assessment, the transfer of Christine Dormer to Chief Assessor, $361,257.79 effective 11/18/24, coming from Instagram Chief Assessor. The second item, Deputy Chief Assessor is tabled. In MIS, the promotion of Connor Matts, MIS Director, rate is $95,000, effective 11/18/24, coming from Data Center Manager. In Children and Youth, the promotion of Daniel Trojan, the County Caseworker 2, rate is 22.386, effective 12/2/24, coming from Caseworker 1, rate is per the contract. Uh, there are some informational items. In Court Administration, the transfer of Andrea White, Treatment Court Coordinator, effective 12/2/24, coming from Investigator, Public Defender's Office. In the Public Defender's Office, the appointment of Nicholas Watt as a part-time public defender, effective 1/6/25, rate is per the contract. Also, in Public Defender, the transfer of Christine Dormer as the Investor, Investigator Fiscal, effective 12/2/24, rate is per the union contract. And in the Sheriff's Office, the appointment of Brooke Donati as a Deputy Sheriff, effective 11/12/24. All appointments are pending drug tests and physicals. All actions involving salary or positions being created are pending salary board approval.
Can I have a motion for the tax assessment transfer, MIS promotion, and Children and Youth?
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Oh, and the only thing else I wanna say is I contacted all three of our ca-, all three of the county dealerships that are not on CoStar, and I asked them to join CoStar so we could start, so county dealerships here in Schuylkill County will have an opportunity for, to be able, the, when we purchase vehicles, that they'll have the opportunity to do it. Cuz as of right now, there's only Miracle Ford and Sands Ford. There is no Chevy dealership, Dodge Chrysler dealership, or Ram dealership in Schuylkill County that will need a vehicle, so that precludes them even from any, well, getting the, even from like SPS or anything they buy as vehicles. Our dealerships are missing out, so I contacted all the three, the three, I think it was Outland, Bob Weaver's, and R&amp;R, and they all said they're gonna look into becoming participants in the CoStar program, because I think county, Schuylkill County businesses should have an opportunity first. So I just wanted to let, let them know that happened last meeting. Can I motion to adjourn?
So moved, sir.
Salary Board, recorded any executive sessions?
There were none, hell.
Public comment for Salary Board?
Melinda Dibbert, North Manheim Township, since I seem to be, or at least I'm being accused of being the only one that knows how to cut stuff. Okay, here we go. I would like to ask the question, and I would like to have it answered. Do we ever, and I don't expect the Commissioners to do this. Does our Human Resources Department ever conduct any salary studies? To look and see what are people in other similar-sized counties? What are they paying their employees? Mr. Kern, do we, do we do that?
Just the Commissioners.
Well-
Oh, okay. Uh, alright.
I think they do.
Do we do that?
We've had, we've had a task.
We did it for 911, that's why we did the increases for new employees, then when we did that, we, people coming in brand-new were getting paid more money than what they perps, we had a re-
Yeah.
We did it with the, we did it with the-
MIS?
Yeah, and did it with the Emergency Management.
No, you did not. No, you did not do it with EMA. Show me, show me that you did it with EMA, cuz I'm telling you right now, their EMA Directors in other counties larger than Schuylkill County, and they have more, um, shall we say, facilities that they have to oversee should some sort of crisis or emergency actually break out. They do not have five full-time employees, and they certainly are not pulling the salaries that our EMA employees are making. And when I raised this issue last year, when those three new positions were created, and I asked, how, how did we decide on these salaries? So John Matts was making $68,000, and then we awarded John Blickley $80,000 right off the bat. And then the Deputy Director went to 72. They're both making more than that now with their cost of living increases, and, and being able to have a county vehicle to drive back and forth to their home, uh, at taxpayer expense is also an extremely lucrative fringe benefit. If we're actually honest about trying to cut everything that we can, I'm telling you what, right now, there's an awful lot of fluff in that department, and you need to go through it with a fine-tooth comb. Thank you.
Any other public comment for Salary Board? Can I motion approve the minutes for the Salary Board meeting on October 23rd, 2024?
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Ykenchik?
Yes.
Approval of, of the minutes for the Salary Board work session on November 7th?
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess? Controller Ykenchik?
Yes.
Uh, Human Resources.
Yes, Commissioners, in tax assessment, eliminate the position of Interim Chief Assessor, effective 11/18/24. Set salary of Christine Dormer as Chief Assessor, $61,257.79, effective 11/18/24. The next item for the Deputy Assessor is tabled. In MIS, set salary for Connor Matts, MIS Director, is $95,000, effective 11/18/24. In Court Administration, set salary for Andrea White, Treatment Court Coordinator, $57,000, effective 12/2/24. And in the Sheriff's Office, create the position of Deputy Sheriff, effective 11/12/24.
Can I motion for the tax assessment on the blocking table?
So moved, sir.
Second.
Other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Ykenchik?
Yes.
Can I motion for MIS, set salary?
So moved, sir.
Second.
Other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Ykenchik?
Yes.
Can I motion for the County Administration?
So moved.
Second.
Court Administration, sorry.
So moved, sir.
Second.
Other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Ykenchik?
Yes.
Judge Russell?
Uh, can I motion for the District Commissioner and the Sheriff's Office?
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Ykenchik?
Yes.
And Sheriff Brudy?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved, sir.
Retirement Board? Recorded executive sessions for Retirement Board?
There were none, hell.
Public comment for Retirement Board? Approval of the minutes from the monthly meeting of October 9th, 2024? Uh, motion?